Let's do this. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting, September 21st. It's a Tuesday, a little after 10 o'clock. Move right into consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll, September 3rd and September 17th, 2021. Approval of claims, September 2nd, 9th, 16th of 2021. Approval of minutes for August 31st, 2021. Treasurer's monthly report for August 31st, 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions? I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. We're gonna move right into commissioners' business here. We have a resolution. Porter County Board of Commissioners, this is amending Section 8.08 of the county-owned vehicles and adding new sections 2.21, pets in the workplace to the Porter County Government Employee Personnel Policy Manual. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a memorandum of understanding between Porter County Board of Commissioners and the City of Alperezo through its Board of Works, Board of Public Works and Safety regarding the parking garage in the admin building. Good morning, Patrick.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How you doing?
Well, thank you.
Good.
Attorney McClure as well. I'll be brief. Thank you for allowing me to address a potential collaborative opportunity between the county commissioners and the City of Alperezo. One of the challenges the city has tried to address over the years is parking in our downtown area. The city has commissioned studies, added parking lots, and reoriented spaces to maximize parking availability. Those efforts have helped, but the city continues to look for additional ways to offer residents and visitors to our community options to park and enjoy the downtown area. Today, I'm presenting a memorandum of understanding that if approved would allow the public to use the county parking garage during off-hours. Our proposal is to make the county parking garage available to the public at no cost. On weekdays from 5:00 p.m. to midnight, on weekends from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., the city would install wayfinding signs to educate the public of public parking availability. The city would compensate the county $15,000 annually to offset costs and any lost revenue. The city would also commit to working with the county to address any concerns or problems that were to manifest during the time this MOU was in place. So our ask is to allow this trial to commence on October 1st and to test its viability. Either side can terminate at 90 days' notice. However, I will represent and commit. If the process is not working, we will terminate before the 90 days' period. The goal is not to antagonize the county. The goal is not to create any problems. The goal is to see whether or not this could be a viable option to benefit all of the visitors and guests to our downtown. I do want to thank Attorney McClure for his assistance in drafting the documents. If you liked it, he drafted it. If you don't like it, then you can blame me on that one there. And finally, if you do approve this memorandum of understanding, it'll be presented to the Board of Works on Friday for their consideration and likely approval.
Thank you, Patrick. Any comments or questions of Patrick? Lip?
It seems like a generous, you know, understanding between the two of us, and I think it makes sense for all of our residents. Motion to approve.
I'd like to add a second to that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just want to appreciate working with the city on this, and I think this is the right thing at the right time. And we look forward to working together and sort of helping the downtown thrive, and that's what this is all about, so.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Done.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up, we have a request that Friday, December 31st, be added to the county holiday schedule for 2021 due to the New Year's falling on Saturday.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an amendment to the employee health insurance plans effective 1122. Good morning. How you doing? You're back, huh?
Yeah.
Why don't you give us a little bit of an update, Scott, on what we're doing here?
Yeah, so GIS with Eric and Renee and our HR director and myself have spent a lot of time going through our health insurance plan for our employees, attempting to make sure we are doing the best we possibly can for the costs in total. What we have here is a package of recommendations that we believe in total will keep us moving in the right direction as far as the overall costs of the Porter County employees' health insurance plan. So of those individual recommendations, the one, the first recommendation would be that the tier, the employee contributions on the traditional or the PPO plan, Plan 1, all the four tiers would be raised by $25 a month for those employees choosing that plan. The second part of that recommendation would be that the employees that choose the high deductible plan or Plan 2 would, starting in 2022, would receive an employer or the county contribution to their HSA of $1,200, which would be paid for the year, but that would be paid quarterly. The single plan enrollers would receive $800 a year, paid quarterly. The third recommendation would be that new employee hires as of 1122 would only have the high deductible plan option. Number four, that gene and cell therapy would be excluded from plan coverage at this point in time. The purpose of the first three recommendations, again, is to manage and continue to attempt to keep our health insurance from becoming something that we're unable to afford. So the plan would be that we do, after quite a bit of math and work with our consultant, GIS, there was a significant difference between the cost of the traditional PPO plan and the Plan 2 for high deductible. That's a, so in an attempt to encourage members to choose a high deductible plan, we worked through this employer contribution to their HSA. We believe along with this addition of the contribution, along with the other steps we've previously taken, such as the clinic itself with Franciscan, along with the deductibles that we have set within the high deductible plan, we do believe now that, for the most part, the math ends up being more favorable for the employees to choose Plan 2 of the high deductible insurance plan with the addition of the employee contribution, excuse me, the employer contribution. The employer contribution would also, just to be clear, would affect not just the people that choose to move or migrate from one plan to the other during open enrollment that's coming up shortly. It also would affect the current employees who have chose the high deductible plan. We believe that with some math that we have looked and some predictions on how many people may or may not migrate, we believe that there could be around a 15% to 25%, probably 20% migration. The cost savings, we believe, we believe there's possibility for some significant cost savings, maybe around $200,000 or $300,000, but we are pretty, we are pretty confident, or I'm pretty confident, that the changes with the additions to the contributions on the high deductible plan, that if nothing else, we are not adding any additional funds or additional costs to the plan. Again, as we attempt to utilize ideas that are out there to try to keep our plan from growing to a place that we can't afford. The gene and cell therapy is actually a recommendation from the OMR as that prescription world, I will say, kind of lightly is trying to figure itself out exactly of what would be covered and not be covered. So again, we would recommend, happy to answer any questions, but the recommendation would be to raise the tiers $25 on the employee contribution for the PPO, have the employer contributions to the HSA, and then also have the option for new hires as of 1122 would only have the option of the high deductible plan options along with the gene cell therapy recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions, and Eric's here also. This also ties in with the American fidelity change so that we have a little bit more help at open enrollment, and those plan enrollers have a more in-depth understanding and knowledge of the plans themselves so that they're better able to help the employees make their decision based upon the real facts and exactly how to read things. So I think these are a good step this year, and then as we continue through 2022, we'll be continuing to look at some of the, I'm gonna mess the term of art here, and I always want to call it, oh, managed care, but that's not the correct terminology.
Care coordination.
Care coordination would be the next step to help with those things. So be happy to answer any questions.
So with your point, the label of the meeting, your HSA is complicated.
Whoa, 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 whoa. This is, this is not, this is commissioners' meeting? This is not a public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, so, well, to, to our person that's presenting. Okay, thank you.
So on the HSA, on the contributions, they'd be paid quarterly, so they would be paid, if this is adopted, there's, one, so $200 of the single plan HSA would be available in the first quarter, $200 would be deposited in the second quarter. Those would be available at that time for use on the HSA.
Yep. Have we found out yet what our, where we're at with the clinic take?
I think we're working on those numbers right now.
Yeah, we actually have a call scheduled this afternoon.
We have some numbers that we've reviewed as far as, some of the problem we have is defining 60%, okay? But we have had the numbers run by Franciscan as far as the amount of employees utilizing on a monthly basis, and it's, it's been pretty good. Frankly, it could be better, okay? But I would be surprised if we're less than 50% utilization at this point in time. So it's out there, and it's, the employees are utilizing it. But again, at open enrollment with a live enroller, then it has a little bit more in-depth knowledge.
Yep.
That's part of making sure that everyone really understands their, their options as they open and roll.
Yeah, with the enrollers actually coming out discussing these plans with everybody, making that very obvious that you do have the clinic, the clinic is free, and then these, you know, steerage options here, I think that's gonna significantly impact the clinic.
Yep.
When's the last time we've had an employee contribution, an increase in employee contribution?
It's been a while.
Hasn't been since I've been up here for seven years, so.
I don't remember one.
Yeah. Well, I think this is just the step of, you know, we're seeing a lot of healthcare increases out there across the board, not just governments, but businesses are too. It's something that's a reality out there.
Everything's going up.
Everything's going up, and I think from this thing, these, these little, these little changes that we're making here are basically, what we're trying to do as a board is to try and get ahead of what's coming over the next two to three years. And I think this is, when you run a plan this big, that's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to be out ahead of it. You're supposed to be making changes and adapting because it's, it's hard enough to find the money every year here to pay for all this insurance. It's, it's gonna be even harder to even have to pay more. We've been there. We've fought it back, and now what we're trying to do is maintain where we're at, so, or even hopefully lower it if we get a fuller participation on the clinic and some other things. So I think this is, this is a nice tweak. It's the right tweak at the right time. It sets us up to be able to make other decisions as the numbers unfold, and that's what we're looking at as we meet all the time on this issue, so. That'd be my take.
For the clinic, and this may be something you'll address later today, but are we still having certain areas that are not participating as much, certain departments?
Yeah, there's certain departments, certain areas that are, you know, utilizing it more than others. What the details are, I'll report back to you.
Do we ever figure out why? Individual department culture is the best answer.
I think that'll help, having people explain.
Absolutely.
More education's always plus.
Yep.
And again, besides the enrollers changing and that system changing, we're also having a health fair October 19th, so that's kind of gonna be moving around the county so that people have another opportunity to, our providers will be there to be able to answer questions. Again, we're just trying to get as much information in the hands of the employees before and at open enrollment so that they know what they're signing up for, and they're making the decision that's best for them.
Yeah, that'll be a great opportunity for them to ask the carriers directly their questions.
Yes.
And they're always welcome to come to us, but sometimes it just helps to have a company rep there.
Yep. Any additional questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Quick question, Scott. Are we gonna, we gonna vote on all four of these, or can we?
You can vote on all four of them.
So this would be all four, that we would be making the motion on all four parts of this section?
So move.
I have one more question, and maybe the employer contribution, will that go to people who already have HSAs as well?
Correct.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Eric. Okay, next up, we have an ordinance amending Title 10 of the Porter County Court of Ordinances pertaining to golf carts and off-road vehicles. This is first reading. So as you know, right now is a commissioners' meeting. It is not a public hearing. It is a commissioners' meeting. What we're gonna do right now is we're gonna suspend the commissioners' meeting, and we're gonna open up a public hearing. And in this public hearing, we're gonna be talking about anybody, we're gonna give three opportunities for anybody to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance, and we're gonna give anybody three opportunities to come up and speak against this ordinance. So that's how. Yeah, and before we, we get into what we're doing here, we're gonna have the county attorney give us an outline of what this ordinance is pertaining to. So Attorney McClure.
So the golf carts or off-road or other light vehicles are not currently allowed on roads that are within the county jurisdiction. We can, through this particular code section amend and allow for those to go. So this, this ordinance would allow, as long as it's being followed, to allow golf carts or off-road vehicles to be able to operate on roads that are in the jurisdiction of the county. The basic, I want to give everyone an idea. So the golf carts will have to have a windshield, seat belts for use by the operator and all passengers, an operating horn, headlights, taillights, turn signals, brake lights, rearview mirror, either a flashing light or a slow-moving triangle sign affixed to the, affixed to the vehicle. The golf carts or off-road vehicles will not be allowed. The overall rule will be they're only allowed on, on roads that have a 35 mile or less posted speed limit. Along with that, there are several roads that have portions or part of them that have 35 mile an hour zones that we're expressly prohibiting use on just due to the nature of either the speed of the road, the width of the road. So there is a fair list of those, and those would be Division, Tower, Smoke, 700 North, Calumet, Meridian, Joliet, 100 South, Sedley, 625 West, Port. And the, the golf carts could be operated from basically March 15th to October 31st, sunrise to sunset. Enforced by the Porter County Sheriff's Department. First offense would be, first violation, $100 fine. Second violation, $150. Third violation, $200. Obviously, in drafting this, lots of concerns. We review the City of Portages, review the City of Alperezo's. Ours are, this proposed ordinance is in very close keeping with both of those because I did not want to cause a situation where a golf cart that's legal to be driven and within the City of Portage or the City of Alperezo somehow is missing some piece of equipment that would make it not fit our ordinance. So I was attempting to not cause that additional confusion for all the law enforcement involved. But as the commissioners know, this is a difficult ordinance because we all understand why people like it, but we all also understand that golf carts are probably not meant to be in a car accident. So we're very concerned. That's why we have some of the additional, some of the additions that are required to be on the golf cart, on the safety features, like the windshield and the seat belts and things like that, headlights, taillights, et cetera. So again, sunrise to sunset, 35 miles and under, with a lot of specific roads taken off. We can always amend if we try this and we find that there are roads that should, should be added. We can always amend and add, but that's the highlights of the actual proposed ordinance for first reading.
I would also make the recommendation, Bob down in planning and Chuck in GIS, if this ordinance does pass, which I don't know if it will or not, but if it passes, I would like to have a golf court GIS map that the people could get, go on and see what roads are available. You know, we should designate what roads are on a map. And we can do that at GIS. Okay. Oh, okay, good. So if anybody in the county would want to know where they are, they could go onto the website, and you could print the map off, and it'll all be there. That's what we're trying to, to get out to everybody so they know how it's all supposed to go down. So it just gives everybody some, some information.
I did forget one major issue that would be in keeping also with the City of Alpo and the City of Portage. There is required to have insurance on the golf carts.
Yeah.
You're gonna operate it on the road, and it's following the state minimums of the 25.
And a driver's license.
Gotta have a driver's license, too.
Driver's license and insurance.
Yeah, so. All right, so we're in a public hearing. Since we've opened that up, we've given a description of what we're doing here. So what I'd like to do now is start the call. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance. First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance? If you do come up, come up to this microphone here, give your name and your address, and, second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And we have a gentleman coming up. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Virgil Gassaway, and I have a question. The, I heard you say fines. Fines for the golf cart infractions. Will these be ticketed like an automobile? I mean, I saw, I didn't hear that, and I was wondering if that would be.
Yeah, if the Porter County Sheriff's Department enforces it, they would be writing a ticket under this ordinance violation.
And, and would this go against their driver's license?
Potentially.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Thank you, sir. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is now closed, and we're back to the commissioners' meeting. Throw it to our board for any comments, questions, or actions.
Well, I want to thank Scott. I know he's, this is one of the things he gets paid to do, but that was a lot of work. You know, ferreting out, you know, the bad ordinances that are out there, the good ones.
We're making it safe.
Yeah, and I assume that there'll be some amendments to this over the next year or two, which is fine. But thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 10 of the Porter County Code of Ordinances pertaining to golf carts and off-road vehicles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. We'll have second reading at our next meeting, October 12th. Next up, we have a resolution, a resolution pursuant to I.C. 36-1-4-10 regarding acceptance of gifts.
Yes, we have a, the Porter County Juvenile Detention Center was in need of a vehicle. We do have a private family that would like to donate a used vehicle to the Porter County Juvenile Detention Center. Care of the Porter County Commissioners. It's a 2014 Chevy Traverse. Within the resolution, it's blue. I have the bid number. It's also current miles with the current Kelley Blue Book trade-in value of just under $8,900. Being donated pursuant to Indiana Code 361410. The commissioners can accept it. The reason why the resolution is so detailed is so that we have a paper trail of how we received the vehicle, and also all the information, and also the value when we received it so that we can get it into the system and have it properly insured.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second pursuant to a resolution on acceptance of gifts.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, much appreciated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have, this is a PAYAP, Stevens Engineers and Construction. This is PAYAP number 11, and the amount of $106,375.60 for material and labor. This is the final payment for 157 Franklin, and throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. You know what? We're gonna do a little something different here. We're gonna move the agenda around. We're gonna, we have some other things that we need to take care of, but some people need to sort of move on, so we're going to move up the requests for the Freedom Group to request the use of the northeast and northwest corners of courthouse grounds Wednesday, September 29th, 2021, for a parents' choice rally to show patriotism of freedom of choice. There will be American flag signs of, signs of various sizes along with microphones and speakers.
Motion to approve.
So hold on, we have, we have Attorney Lip here from the City of Alpo, because they, I believe, are on the Board of Works for Friday.
Correct.
And so on this, we're just being clear that what's in red is what the county has jurisdiction over. What is in yellow is where the city's jurisdiction begins, because of the sidewalks. So just trying to be crystal clear on who's approving what, where, and why, whether it's this group or any group that is protesting or having a rally, that full sets of the County Sheriff's Department or the City of Alpo could be there enforcing different portions of this just because that we have a split jurisdiction on, with the courthouse and where the county's jurisdiction begins and ends, and the city's begins and ends. So I believe that, yes, the northeast and northwest corners, and that's why we have them appropriately designated that way, just so everyone knows what we're approving.
Do we have time on this? I mean, there's microphones and speakers, so I know that in the past we've had some court proceedings disturbed. I'm sorry?
Come on up.
Yeah, that's perfect.
5:30 to 7:30?
Thank you.
Yep. That takes care of him.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
30-minute motion.
Oh, second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, thank you. Thank you, Patrick. We're gonna, Lee Childress, IT Director, come on forward, Lee. Morning, Lee.
Morning.
This is a request to change the name of the position of Deputy Director/Cybersecurity Engineer. It's a simple one.
Yeah, it's a 144. We're just changing the name of, from Deputy Director to Deputy Director/Cybersecurity Engineer. This is his first stop, and he's, they have the 144 changed, and I believe he's, he's on a commissioners', excuse me, on a council meeting. I don't know if it's this month or next. This is this month. This month, so just highlighting the cybersecurity as part of the number two's.
Job.
Job description.
Yep.
We have a plaque, I said, we have a plaque. We have a plaque, I said, we have a plaque big enough to fit all that on there?
It's a big plaque.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to change the name of Deputy Director position to Deputy Director/Cybersecurity Engineer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Lee. Hang in there. Next up, we have Development and Stormwater Management. We've got Bob Thompson, the head of the department, that will be presenting. First up, morning, Bob.
Morning.
First up, we have an ordinance, this is a second reading. So the first reading in the public session was, happened at our last meeting, where you give everybody the opportunity to come forward and speak. This is second reading, and this is amendment from CM, Moderate Intensity Commercial, to I1 Light Industrial. This is the northwest corner of US Highway 6 and 149. The petitioner is Coolwood Associates. This is second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from A1 General Agriculture to IN Institutional, southeast corner of State Road 49 and 250. This, the petitioner is the East Porter County School System. Second reading as well. Throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have United Consulting. This is an LPA consulting contract for County Road 200 West over Damon Run County Bridge 131. This is for right-of-way services. Can you give us a little, a little bit on that?
Yes, this is for their actual right-of-way acquisition for the Bridge 131 with NDOT. When we're going through the federal aid process, the right-of-way is always a separate agreement or a separate contract because we have to bring in the appraisers on it. The contractor or the agreement before you is just the cost of providing the services. Obviously, there's the negotiation for the purchase of the right-of-way on that, so that's gonna be separate, but it's under this agreement.
What are, what is, what are they requiring on extra, additional right-of-way here, Bob? Is it just for embankment slopes and things like that?
Part of it is gonna be, well, all of our bridges are probably, probably, they are being widened from like 24 feet.
Yes, that's our mandate, yep.
To 32 feet. In some cases, we go down to 28. So within the actual channel area of the bridge, they are gonna be widening it to take over some of the areas where this are gonna be working on the Damon Run with some of the ditch and approach to it and scour guards and stuff like that on that. So there is gonna be widening right around the channel area, but then there's also gonna be widening in the construction area, which we generally say 400 to 500 feet each side of the bridge.
Yeah.
With the approach work that's coming into it, that's gonna be widened slightly.
And here we have the benefit of the regulated drainage element.
Right.
Associated with Damon Run, so we don't need to acquire additional temporary right-of-way to do some of the grading work associated with the channel.
So just for, for, as, as we've been working over the last six, seven years on, in, in, working on our bridge inventory of over 135 bridges that we have in the county, every time we go into a bridge and we redo it, we, we look at the opportunity to widen it, or look at the opportunity to get rid of guardrails and have natural slopes down to the ditch. When you do all that, because remember, this bridge that you're repairing has gotta get another 50 to 75 years of life. So if you're gonna do it now and you're gonna upgrade it for the next 50 to 75 years, now's the time to do that. And that's what this is, what we're doing here. It's, it's not just the bridge, it's all the, you might have a stream below that turns real radically and you need to change the bridge for that. There's a lot of things that go on in that. I don't wanna get too far into the weeds, but, because that's what we do up here. But it's that, we're taking the opportunity to do it right for the next span lifecycle of the bridge. That's what we're trying to do. So just, so, it's a little more, just wanted to throw that out there. So we have.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, United Consulting. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Next up, request to approve plans for Bridge 168. This is Brummett Road over the Little Cow River. Bob?
This is for the plan approval. We are in what is referred to as Stage 3 right now. They're soon gonna be developing the contract documents for it. We are cleaning up and finishing up our right-of-way acquisition for this one, so we're really getting close to having NDOT go out with bids. It's either gonna go out in December, or I might ask for it to be pushed back until March just to clear up a few things. So, but it's going soon. I just wanna point out one other additional item, as you were discussing earlier. This was about a 60-foot-long bridge.
Yeah.
With what we're seeing, and Mike working with the 100-year storm going through these things, this bridge is going from 60-foot span to over 100-foot span. Yes.
Wow. It grew.
Oh, I don't remember. We, we selected a design engineer.
Correct.
We have.
Yes.
Okay.
This is just approving the plans for what they put together. Now, I know we talk a lot of bridges, but I wanna make sure I'm talking about the right one. Is this the one with the town of Porter?
No, this is the one just outside of Chesterton, it's right by.
Right by the elementary school.
Roman Elementary School, exactly.
Okay, I'm, got square now. There's only 135 of them. I got it, okay. Sorry.
So what do you, what do you?
I get them mixed up.
What is our projected start date on that?
Um, depends on when we actually do the letting through NDOT. I think the original schedule for it is December, beginning of December letting. On that, I mean, we're really coming in close. But I might ask for it to go to March. If it is in December, we can possibly start in February, which may be ideal with tree clearing on that, even though I think Rich may have done most of it already. If we end up doing a March letting, you're probably looking at May.
Will this be a case where we'll have to, to close that road completely when we get to that?
Yes. And I think they're working around the school, too, probably, is what they're.
We wanna, we wanna make sure that we get our big sign out front, maybe 30 days before that, letting their residents know that this is gonna happen.
Yeah. Mike and I sat down and spoke with the superintendent, facilities director for Dunham School Corporation, and we told them about this particular bridge, and they brought in the transportation director on that. So we are keeping them informed as far as the Dunham School Corporation because they have 60 bus trips a day that go across this bridge.
Yep. Yeah, two sizable, you guys know, communities on either side of the road there.
Correct.
So the signs, the sign would be really helpful.
Yes.
So commissioners don't go down that road and cuss myself because I can't, I didn't remember it was closed.
Yeah, it's happened to me before.
Oh, yeah.
What am I doing here?
A dozen times this summer, yeah.
Well, that was easy to do this summer.
Oh, yeah.
Those darn commissioners.
It's Jim's fault.
Yep. We have, so that.
That's what I say.
When I get south, south of 600 North, it's, I know whose fault it is, it ain't mine.
Yeah, it is.
It's all ours. It's all our, it's all of us. So we got requests to approve plans for Bridge 168.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Last up, this is for Northwest Indiana now. I think she's been here before. This is a request to use the northeast.
She's here, she's here.
Oh, come on up. Oh, there she is. You can stay there if you want. If you wanna come up, that's fine. Sorry about that, I didn't, the man.
The man.
Yeah.
The man.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. There's a request to use the northeast and northwest corners of the courthouse grounds on Saturday, October 7th, this year, from 3:00 to 5:30. To hold a rally in support of reproductive healthcare, they will be using a small sound system, speakers, and a handheld microphone, along with a table for water, first aid, and event t-shirts. Attendees will bring their own lawn chairs.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Good to go. All right. And that brings us to the end of our meeting. Anybody wishing to address this board? And with that, the board, this meeting stands in recess. I'm getting out of here quick.